Goodnoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the work session of the Cuyahoga County Council for Tuesday, September 27, 2011. We'll call the meeting to order, and Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'll have the roll for the work session. Mr. Greenspan?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Present.
Mr. Brady?
Present.
Mr. Manah?
Here.
Mr. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Schron?
Here.
Ms. Conwell?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Simon?
Here.
And Ms. Conley?
Here. We have a quorum present. As is in keeping with our tradition regarding the medical mart, we have an update today for Mr. Jeff Applebaum. It's a pleasure to see you as always, Mr. Applebaum.
Thank you. Let's see, is this on? Is this on?
I think you should use the microphone here.
I was told to use this because I walk around too much, but I'll use the microphone.
Okay.
So that means I have to stay here. That's okay. There's a failed experiment. Okay. Well, thank you. I'm delighted to be back. Actually, I, we skipped a little time, so I think it's been beyond a month, almost two months now since I spoke to you last, so I have a bit of updating to do for you. And I'm going to take you through, as I've done, using the same format I've done before, about where we stand on the project. I have a few introductions to make today, and I'm also going to talk to you about some action items that we'll be asking you to consider in the near future on the project. So let me begin. You've seen this project summary before. It's at the beginning of every presentation, and the principal reason I put it there is to tell you that nothing has changed. It's the same project, the same square footage, the same cost, the same start and completion date. The start date would never change, same completion date, and we have really the same project, no major modifications of any significance whatsoever. Let me start with the design update. So where do we stand in the design process? This is a design-build project. Last time I was here, I told you that we had a 75 percent construction document set that had been approved. We have since moved from that point. The 100 percent construction document set was presented to the county for our complete review. We are at the point right now where we are about to recommend that set for what we call conditional approval. There are some elements, and there's some pieces and parts that are not yet completely there, minor details that we still expect, but we are going to issue our conditional approval of the final design set within the next few days, which is a big milestone on the project because we're through the design process. So shortly, we'll start revealing and showing you more and more aspects of design. There's still some elements of interiors and other things that are being worked out, but the design is basically completely done, with certain elements in the process of final refinement. At this point in time, I did want to talk to you a little bit about who's beside, behind the scenes. From PMC, I'm sure if all of you who know me thought I was actually doing the detailed design review, you might get nervous, so I thought I'd present to you the individual at Project Management Consultants, our consulting company, who is the lead in terms of design review. This is Steve Zanoni, and I just thought I'd introduce Steve. Steve has been with our organization for 12 years. He formerly had his own design firm in Cleveland called Zanoni, Heckman &amp; Peto. He is actually responsible for the design of many significant structures. After that, for a long time, he was actually the head of design at URS Consultants, came to our organization 12 years ago, and has done major projects. So I wanted to introduce Steve because he's done a yeoman's job on all aspects of the project. He works closely with Bonnie on certain aspects of the design review. By way of example, we've been having some issues that we've been looking at with respect to the ceiling design. Steve made some trips last week with the design team, was very instrumental in helping them think through some of our concerns, so he's been very involved. Steve's partner in all this, working with Steve and me and other members of our team, is Conventional Wisdom. Now, you've heard about Conventional Wisdom many times. They are our convention consultants, and they have been involved from day one on the project. One of the things I want to talk to you about, and by the way, it says contract amendment, that should say number three. There's a three missing there. We are going to be presenting to you, for your recommendation, an amendment to the Conventional Wisdom contract, and I want to talk to you about that now because it will come up, and I want to tell you a little bit about the services component of the project. Conventional Wisdom, we have already processed through the county an exemption from competitive bidding for them. They were here at the outset of the project. They were actually involved on the project before we were, back in 2008. They are unique in the convention center industry throughout the United States. They have worked on over 400 convention center projects. They are the repository of substantial wisdom about how convention centers operate, how they work. They actually prepared the initial county programmatic requirements. So all the programmatic requirements that MMPI has to meet were originally prepared by MMPI, and those went into the development agreement. They have been our watchdog, working side by side with us with respect to the operational and programmatic requirements. They understand all the very fine elements about how convention centers have to operate. They have worked with us to review and advise, and they've assisted in causing the developer to make major design modifications for our benefit, and frankly, for the developer's benefit. They have recognized the wisdom of a lot of what conventional wisdom has had to offer, and we've all relied a lot on their advice. One thing I will tell you about their contract, though, when they started on this project, they were not given a full services contract for the project. They were originally given a contract for the programmatic phase, and then, and this is once again before we got there, they had a contract that really just took them through design development services through the GMP. But their work is essential throughout the entire project. And by the way, today, actually, their contract technically ran out earlier this year. We've been trying to get a contract revision done with them for the rest of the project, but their contract, to date, they've been paid $278,000 for all their services on the project, including all the initial programmatic review, the operational review, the design modifications, all the review of documents with us through the GMP. We are going to recommend to you, and we've negotiated with them in advance of coming back to this body, a proposed contract modification. It'll be amendment number three to their contract, and this will take them really through the completion of some of the work we've asked them to do right now in the document review, all the way through to the end of the project. The amendment number three, for the remainder of everything on the project, would be $270,000. Their scope of services would be helping us with the program and operational milestone reviews. They not only are helping us with all the design aspects, but they are helping us with the operational reviews. They helped us develop the operational standards from MPI, you know, completing the construction document review, which they've been working with us on, helping us with design revision reviews throughout the project, helping us with operational scope and budget reviews, and then when the project is actually ready to open up, they'll help us with facilities commissioning. They'll look throughout the entire project, look at all the systems, all of the processes, simply to make sure they meet the operational requirements of the project. Now, this amendment, by the way, would not represent any new or different money in the project. We actually have an operational budget, which is built into the project for the counties, all the county's consulting services, and that actually includes us. It includes other law firms that we're going to be working on the project. That budget is there, and frankly, that budget, we haven't even tapped into 50 percent of that budget right now, I don't believe. So there's money in the budget for this. It was always contemplated that there would be additional services throughout the rest of the project. This basically takes their contract and completes it. The one issue here is, it is a, considering the fact that they had a $270,000 first-phase contractor, a little bit more than that, 278, and now it's 270 for the rest, it is a large amendment compared to the rest of their contract. So for that reason, we do have to go through the process of getting an exemption from competitive bidding. I believe we've already worked through that process, Bonnie, and that's been approved by the appropriate committee. What's the name of the committee?
Contract and Purchasing Board.
Contract and Purchasing Board has already seen the justification. We've given them all the materials. They've approved of this exemption, and I knew I'd forget the name of that board. Thank you, Bonnie. So this, but I just wanted to set this up because this will be the final action that we'll ask council to approve of. So that's an administrative detail, but I wanted to forecast that for you. So for a construction update, we've really gone through the design process. We're nearly, we've really completed the major design process. There's some details to be done. Where do we stand on construction? We are still on schedule for an August 31, 2013 substantial completion date. We had some challenges early on in the project with some caissons and other issues, but we've, any time that we have lost, we have made up, so we are right on schedule right now, we're very proud to say. To date, there is $71.2 million of construction in place. You see all that work out there. The question is, how much work is actually in place? Because most of it you don't see because it's foundation work, and it's, you know, it's not up out of the ground. But it's $71.2 million. $8.26 million was put in place during the month of August alone. So we are ruling along. The project, as of the end of August, was 20 percent complete, based on billings to date, for work in place and stored materials. I think we've seen the preliminary pay application. It's not in this report yet for September. I think that'll take it up to 24 percent complete. So there's a lot of work which is going on, a lot of work in place. Of the 54 bid packages on the project, 45 have now been awarded, so the contract award is proceeding apace. In a few minutes, I'll tell you about how much of that has been awarded to SBE contractors, but that is going very well, a very active SBE program and bidding and award program. We're still on schedule to receive LEED Silver Certification, so from a schedule point of view, everything is proceeding apace. What's actually happening out there? Well, let me show you some construction highlights. A lot of what has been happening since I talked to you last has been concrete placement. Here, you see the east concourse along, near where the public auditorium is, and there you see formwork and rebar placement. If you have the ability to look out, you'll see the work is coming up out of the ground there. You'll see the foundations there. You'll actually see steel now starting to be erected in that area. This picture doesn't look like much, but this is symbolic. This is the pouring of the final caisson. You may recall in my earlier discussions, I talked to you about these enormous caissons that are the primary foundations. There were 66 of them. We had challenges with respect to those caissons, but all of them are in place. On September 10th, we poured the final caisson. All 66 have been accepted, so that chapter of the project is over, and that was a high-risk chapter. We are beyond the risk associated with that, with one minor detail that I'm going to tell you about in a few minutes. So that foundation work is now done. Right now, if you happen to be around on certain nights, you'll see massive concrete pouring operations. The medical mart itself involves the pouring of three massive concrete slabs. Here, you see one of the three mat slabs being poured on September 19th in the, well, this is actually a picture early in the morning, but it's at the end of the concrete pour that took place in the evening. There's three massive pours like that. This is another picture, sort of at ground level, where you can see, you know, the workers, workmen down there placing rebar, reinforcing concrete, as they're readying the pour, and there you see the rig that actually handles the concrete pour operation. Now, this is important. We are now coming out of the ground erecting steel. So now what you see is, this is the ballroom pre-function area. So you recall that on the north side, north of Lakeside, we have the ballroom in the center, and the pre-function area is to the east of the ballroom. So what you see now is the steel going up for the pre-function area directly to the east of the ballroom. What you see on the ground there, well, we'll talk about that in a minute, but this is the beginning of the erection of steel because steel erection is beginning, began north of Lakeside. This is a, this picture, what you now see laying on the ground is a truss. This is the first truss assembly, and this truss is going to span, it's going to go east to west. I'll show it to you in a minute, and it's going to go from one side of the ballroom to the other side, and this is the major roof truss. This particular truss is, there's 30 of these trusses, and what you see, you see the men on the ground, men and women on the ground, I assume there's some women in this crew, assembling the truss, and basically, there are, it's 120 feet, three 40-foot sections that they're assembling on the ground. So that truss is actually 120 feet, and it's going to span the ballroom, and there's going to be 30 of them. Here, you see on 9/21, the crane, very large crane, which is getting into position to pick, pick up that truss and do what we call a pick, to actually pick that truss up and put it in place. And by the way, the first truss that was erected on the project went in place today. So this is a picture from earlier today. Here, you see the very large crane, and what you see there is a splay, so it's got two connection points. So you have the truss, two connection points on the truss. It lifts this 120-foot truss and puts it in place, and this is at the very end, the very northernmost end of the ballroom. So that's the first truss in place. You'll now see additional trusses which are erected, and 30 of them will head south, but this is a major milestone as we start to put the steel in place on this side of the project. You see the steel on the, to the left, you see the steel to the right, and you see the truss which is now spanning the steel for the long span where the ballroom is. So this is all going in place today, actually. So that's a little bit of the construction update. We are done with foundations substantially. We are placing a lot of concrete, and we're starting with the erection of the steel. I should mention some other things. Our interior work at Public Auditorium, the work we had to do as part of the separation, is now virtually complete. That's being punched out, so a lot of those issues are behind us. So the project is moving very well. Now, a few, I think last time I was here, and I can't remember who asked the question, but the question was, because we knew about the crack on St. Clair, and the question was, is that the biggest issue that I expect to occur on the project? And I gave you the mysterious answer of no. I said there will be other issues which occur on the project. We face risk management issues. That's what our various contingencies were all about. You asked me to predict what they were, and I said, I can't, but I can tell you that things will happen. So in the, so for the purpose of transparency, rather than wait and tell you about these later, I am going to tell you about some of the issues that we have on the project. I'm going to tell you about three of them. These are on what we refer to, or I refer to, as our risk management list. These are issues. We anticipate issues will occur. We have to identify the issue and figure out what our mechanism is for dealing with the issue. So let me talk to you about three, the three issues that are currently on our, or at least on my, risk management list. By the way, there's small issues that occur all the time, not worth talking about. It's what routine contingencies are for. These are some larger issues. Well, the first one you know about, and that's the St. Clair crack, and I'm going to give you an update on the St. Clair crack. The second issue, which I'm going to talk about, has to do with methane collection, and the third issue has to do with the West Third Street elevated roadway. All of these have an issue for the project, which I'm going to discuss with you. Don't worry, they're all covered, they're all taken care of, but I do want to tell you what's going on with all of them. The St. Clair Avenue crack, the data collection has now been complete. We now have all the data collected, which includes a massive amount of work with soil borings and kilometers, tilt meters, crack meters, just a whole lot of investigation has been done. At this point in time, I'm pleased to report that despite the existence of this three-inch crack on St. Clair, there's been no material impact to project construction or project schedule. We never had to do anything that had a material impact. Obviously, when it first occurred, we had to stop work in the vicinity until we did a little bit of investigation, but since that time, we've been able to continue on with all of our activities on the project. We have not had to make any fundamental design changes. We haven't had any true impact on the schedule. Any small impact we have has since been long recovered. So no impact to the schedule. Obviously, there was an impact to St. Clair Avenue. It cracked. I can tell you, at this point in time, we have now received the recommendations and the results back from the Design Builders Consultants. It is their recommendation to us and to the city that St. Clair can now be temporarily patched and reopened immediately. So we believe that there is no reason why St. Clair cannot be reopened. We're going to have to patch it because obviously, temporary patch because there is now a crack, and there's some discontinuity. And so their recommendation is that we do the temporary crack. They've done the structural analysis. They don't believe there's any reason why we cannot have traffic on that road. At the conclusion of the project, we're going to have to look at longer-term resurfacing. Obviously, we want to get through the project, make sure nothing else happens with respect to the road, and also, you know, if there's any construction traffic that does any damage, you would wait till the end. But at that point in time, we believe a longer-term resurfacing is in order. This recommendation has been made to the city. The city has not yet accepted that recommendation. They've said we want to look at some additional data. They've requested additional data. The project team has supplied all of the data that they have requested. There is a meeting now which is scheduled to take place shortly to discuss reopening. So we think that that road can be reopened, and we'll wait to see what the city says, but we don't think there's an issue with respect to reopening the road and resuming traffic. One of the questions that you would and should ask me is, what about responsibility for costs? What I can tell you right now is that, to date, we believe that there's been substantial design costs associated with looking at this whole issue. To date, we are informed that the Design Builders Insurance Carrier has picked up those costs. We do think that this is a, this may well be an insurable event. We do think that it is the general liability carrier for the team that picks up the bulk of this. We do not, right now, have any claim or any assertion that there is a cost that the county should have any responsibility for. So at this point in time, it would be our position that this is something which is being absorbed by the project team, to the extent that anybody with respect to the project absorbs it. We don't see this as a county cost. No claim has been made with respect to a county expenditure at this point in time. So that is the update with respect to the crack issue, and the good news is, is the damage and the issue is contained. Second issue, this is not a major issue, but I thought I'd tell you about it, methane gas. After installation of caissons and micropiles, and by the way, there is, I don't know if you smile, but throughout downtown Cleveland, we have a substantial amount of methane gas. Every one of the caisson operations that we do, methane gas control is a very significant issue. As a matter of fact, it was a deadly issue on two downtown projects during construction, so this is a big deal. But it's usually, it's primarily a big deal during construction. Occasionally, however, we are concerned about some continuing off-gassing even after construction. So after installation of the caissons and micropiles, there were low levels of methane gas that continued to be observed. The team responsibly engaged an engineer who has a specialization with these issues to investigate. The result is a recommendation that we do, in the interest of caution, and I should have a space between "of" and "conventional," but in the interest of caution, we have, they have recommended, and there will be the implementation of a conventional gas collection and venting system. This is not unusual. By way of example, the Rock Hall has a methane gas and collection system. There are some buildings downtown where it was found to be recommended, some it was not. In any event, we are, in the abundance of caution, going to have this gas collection and venting system to be perfectly safe and secure. The cost is in the vicinity of $200,000 to ultimately implement this. This is a developer's contingency. This is one of the risks a developer takes, so this is something that MMPI has acknowledged is their responsibility to come out of their developer's cost for the project. Once again, I really showed this to you as an example of one of the many issues that comes up during the project. We look at it, we discuss it, it's investigated. We allocate the appropriate party to take care of it. In this case, it is taken care of by developer's contingency. The third issue is actually the biggest issue that we've probably faced to date in terms of a cost issue on the project. As you may recognize, on this particular project, at the north end of the project, there is a drive that goes from, basically, West Third Street, extends behind the parking garage there, and leads to the entranceway to our project and the loading dock. Sometimes that's referred to as the West Third Street Drive. It is an elevated roadway. It actually is more or less of a bridge structure. On this project, one of the conditions that was discovered not too long ago is that, and this is unfortunate, this has to do with, you know, what you see sometimes when you do build in urban area. As it turns out, there is severe deterioration of the underside of that existing elevated road structure. So as they open it up, as they look at it, they find out that the deck is in extremely poor condition, poorer than we would have liked, and the determination has been made that it probably cannot take without repair the type of road traffic either during construction or ultimately in operations. Keep in mind, that is our ma, that is our loading dock. That's the road that all the trucks come down. So we do recognize now that we're going to have to repair that road. It's simply part of what we've now discovered has to happen to make this project work. And by the way, it always would have had to have happened, but it's our project, we now have to do it to make the project work. So the bridge deck essentially needs to be replaced. The problem we have is a timing problem. That roadway is also critical with respect to construction. In other words, that is, has always been one of the major entryways to bring construction vehicles and construction trucks onto the project. Now, the difficulty we have is that you've all seen the other major entranceways to the project. You've seen, I mean, we used to have, where the medical mart is, used to be an entranceway. Well, that obviously has closed down as we begin the medical mart. You've all seen the major ramp that we have coming off the project on Lakeside. Well, eventually, that ramp has to go away as we commence construction. So our problem is that while we know that we now have to replace that roadway, we have to replace it now, because we have to fix it, get the new roadway in there in time for it to be the primary and final entryway to the project when we no longer have access to the Lakeside ramp. So that really means that this new road has to be operational by March 1, which means...
12.
Excuse me? Yeah, Mark, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right. March 1, 12. I will correct that. This is the problem with doing the presentation, getting all this information at the last minute. I apologize. That is 2012. Thank you. In order to avoid cost and schedule impacts to the project later on, and I'm going to now have to correct, well, no, this is actually correct. So it means that the new deck replacement design must be in place no later, or at least we must start the replacement design literally in a few weeks by 10/7/11. So we really have to move forward, implement the new design, so that we can implement the new construction and get that road built. Now, this is an expensive proposition. This is $1.6 million more or less. So it is one of the contingencies that we have to deal with on the project. One of the, well, one of the questions that you're going to ask me right now is, how's this going to be paid for? I'm giving you this information in advance of, I know this, we know this has to be done, we're going to authorize it being done. There are two potential contingencies that this come out of. One of them is the developer's contingency, and one of them is the county's contingency. By the way, we have not yet touched the county contingency for any purpose. I'm going to say on this issue, we have a discussion about this. We know it's going to be funded and move forward. We are sorting out right now some of the discussion with respect to the responsibility for this particular roadway. Keep in mind that it is adjacent to, but it's not within, it's adjacent to the project site. It's necessary to serve the project. It's not on, it's not within the neat lines of the project itself. So I'm going to give you more information about this as we go forward, but I wanted to alert you to the fact that this issue is there. There is ample contingency, whether we're talking about the developer's contingency or the county's contingency, to cover this risk. Frankly, we had actually thought that more contingency expenditure would have occurred by this date, and we have had no contingency expenditure, by way of example, out of the county contingency, but this is one of the first true risk issues, unanticipated risk issue that we have seen on the project. The good news is that we're out of foundations, we're 20 percent into the project, so most of the risk of these types of major issues, we're now beyond. We've now discovered everything we think that we are likely to discover. I'm sure there'll be more things, but in terms of a major issue, on a risk profile, we're beyond most of the major risks. But I wanted to report this one to you because it is going to be the source of some ongoing So let's now go on, and I can ask, take questions now, or I'll take them at the end, however you want, as you, as you think about your questions. I'm now going to go on to some contracting and staffing information about the project.
Madam President, do you mind if I ask, do you mind if I ask a question on that? For the, that West Third, that West Third area, who's the, who's the property owner of that?
We actually, that ultimately is, it continues to be owned by the city, but we have, we have an easement. We have the rights to its use. So the city owns it, but we have an easement to use it for the purpose of the project, and we have a, an extended property, right, with respect to the use of that property.
Right. I guess my question would be, well, one, if that means that it's part of the city's responsibility to repair it. Secondly, not just who pays for it, but who, who was supposed, it doesn't seem to be, I mean, to me, when I, when I, when I think about a contingency fund or something that was unanticipated, that just comes up in a large-scale project, the most reasonable ones would be ones where you're opening something up that you, and you don't know what's there[1793.86] ones would be ones where you're opening something up that you, and you don't know what's there until you get there. So you dig into the ground in an area you don't know, and you find something that you don't know is there, or something just happens like the crack, for instance. I don't think there's any way to predict that. Is this an, was this an unforeseeable condition of this bridge? And if it isn't, whose, whose due diligence is supposed to uncover it? Because it seems, it seems on the surface that that would be kind of logical to, to look at it and have an understanding of what its capacity is.
I thank you for the question. I don't want to get too deeply in it yet before I've, you know, this, this may be one of those issues where we have a, a further discussion about it, but let me say the following things. Number one, we have done the, the initial analysis. We, we don't believe, the city will be pleased to hear, we do not believe this is a city responsibility, because there was no representation made as to the condition of that roadway, although it's unfortunate that it's in the condition it's in. The question of whether it was an unforeseen condition, and the question as to whether this is an MMPI responsibility as the developer, out of their contingency, or a county responsibility out of our contingency, right now is, is an issue which is in contention. So we'll, we can give you more information about it, but we are right now talking through this with MMPI, because we have taken a position with respect to this that may be somewhat different from MMPI's position. At this point in time, however, they, they have not, they've agreed to continue to have this conversation, and we're, we are continuing to discuss it with them.
Well, just because a roadway, just because it, there wasn't a representation made as to the condition of a roadway, wouldn't mean that that necessarily, that that would absolve a, a property owner of maintaining the roadway. Right?
Well, I, I would, I would like, if, with your permission, to defer, we've actually done, have some legal research and some information on this.
Okay.
And I'd like to defer this conversation a little bit.
Sure.
Let me say it this way, if we had a position with the city, I think it's only fair for us to, to talk to them first about it before we would, you know, talk about that here. But there is an issue with respect to the roadway. There is a, there are some issues with respect to responsibility.
I understand you don't want to go into too much detail, but who, who actually, I would assume that determining the load-bearing capacity of infrastructure would have been part of the original, the original site selection and suitability studies that would have been done. And just who, who physically would have performed that? Who, who did that work?
Well, and I'm...
Is that more complicated than I'm?
Number one, it's more complicated, and there's some interesting issues with respect to it. I will also tell you that part of that preceded me, but I think we can fill you in on some of this information. Once again, at this point in time, this is not a claim which has been formally made with respect to payment of county funds. So I think we have to take it a few steps.
Okay. Thank you.
But once again, I did, what I did not want to do is I did not want to wait. I wanted to alert everyone that this issue is out there before we, we go further with So contracting and staffing, yes?
I, I think I know which roadway you're talking about. So all of the ingress and egress for the Med Mart, like all the trucks and everything, is going to have to come through that roadway?
Well, that is the final, the driveway, I mean, ultimately, there is a drive that goes underground to the loading dock, and that is the drive. So you, you go down that drive to get into the loading dock. So that is a critical entryway into the project, yes. There's other ways to get to that drive, but ultimately, that is the drive into the loading dock.
So you'd have to come up, like, up from the stadium on West Third or, or from downtown and make that...
The truck, the trucks would.
The trucks would.
Yes. There's a traffic flow where they come down there and they come around, but yeah, that's, that's the way they would come down. And you want that to happen. That's a good thing, because you want to guide and control the, you know, the, the traffic flow. But unfortunately, that is the roadway that is now, has some problems with respect to its condition.
Okay.
So let me move on now to talk a little bit about contracting and staffing. And you've seen this before, but we're, our timeline, our major timeline, has not changed in any significant way. In fact, it's, it's precisely where we thought it would be at this point in time. This is our manpower loading chart, and so you recall that we were kind of ramping up March, May, June, August, we are staying steady at around 234, what this really says is there's an average of 234 onsite labors every day during the month of August. Now, there's obviously a lot of more people involved with the project, there's a lot of support people, people back in offices, designers, et cetera, fabricators, but these are the people who are onsite labors on the project. For a while, this will be relatively level, because once again, until we have enclosure, a lot of the activities are linear. After we have enclosure next summer, the manpower loading will explode, because then we'll have a lot of interior trades working. We think next summer, we'll get up to about 580, we'll double it, and even have some more as fit-out starts. So that's kind of where we are. By the way, one of the interesting issues here is if you take a look at the original proposed manpower loading, there actually, it was anticipated that we could have more manpower on the project right now, because when Turner first did the project, they built in a certain amount of contingency hours for just unknown conditions on the site, such as subsurface conditions. We're actually a little under the original manpower loading curve, because some of those contingency hours aren't going to be expended. Now, as soon as we do some of this other work, by way of example, when we do the road work, then some of those contingency hours will be expended, so some of those hours will rise. But right now, we're right along the curve, the, the expected curve with respect to manpower loading. The project is proceeding at pace, the way it should be proceeding. Safety, there have been some minor incidents, but we still, to date, only have one accident that is, that has resulted in lost time, so it's been a very safe project. We have not had any major, significant injuries, certainly no deaths or anything like that. So Turner's maintaining a very good safety record on the project, Turner O'Shaughnessy. Economic inclusion, this is an update of the graph with respect to SBE. Our goal is 25%. We are at around 32% to 33% of overall dollars going to small business enterprises. And once again, one of the important statistics there is that 42, and I can't remember the exact number, but I think there's something in the order of 115 SBEs who are either subcontractors, there's a few prime contractors who are SBEs, 42 of them have been hired by their respective prime contractors for the first time. So I've told you in the past the significance of this first-time hire program, because that's what really creates relationships and meaningful work. We're, we're still doing very, very well on first-time SBEs. Our county residency stands at about 47% as opposed to our 40% goal. Our city residency is at 22% as opposed to our 20% goal, and I'll show you some more data on that. With respect to the breakdown of the SBEs, where they are, that 32%, last time I did this, I showed you a graph. It was completely unreadable, because it's too, too, too large. So all I'm going to tell you is we have, and we're providing it for uploading onto the county website. I can give you copies, it'll be up on the county website, but it's just unreadable right now, so I didn't want to frustrate you by putting an unreadable graphic on there, but I could give it to you if, if you want a paper copy. With respect to the breakdown of workforce hours by jurisdiction, race, and gender, this graph is somewhat readable, so I put it up here. This actually shows, as of the date of this graphic, which is basically 8, 8/21, I know it's not, I can read it, so I can recite it to you. It's 8/21. It shows that there's been 215,000 hours worked on the project. Of those, the 22%, 22% to 23%, which is City of Cleveland, is 47,900 hours. Cuyahoga County, 101,800 hours, 47%. We did agree to start publishing minority workforce hours, and that stands at 20%. You know, the first time we reported it, it was a big news story, it was 19%. It's raised slightly to just over 20%. So that's 42,129 man-hours. And then the man-hours, I always feel funny talking about female man-hours, but the, but the person-hours is, stands at 10,024 hours or 5% with respect to female workforce participation. So that's equal to or better than what we reported previously. And that's where those hours stand. At this point in time, I want to, I want to turn to another issue, and Tony Coyne is here, so I'm going to invite Tony, after I talk about this, to comment a little bit, if he wishes. And I'm sure he'll wish to, so you can ask him some questions. In the past, I've talked to you a little bit about this whole issue of the group plan and the baseline. As you recall, with respect to the mall design, we have a baseline design. We have, we have somewhere north of $21 million as part of our project, which is in that baseline design. And you've seen depictions of the baseline design that basically, as you recall, has the, basically, the, the green mall with the overlook at Lakeside. It has the tree-lined LAs on either side. You've seen, you know, depictions of that, and we've made presentations about that. You've also heard, of course, that the mayor has established the group plan commission. It is their goal here to take the baseline and to talk about what, if any enhancements, are appropriate, you know, upgrades, if you will, enhancements over the, over the baseline. And they've gone through a process of identifying potential design enhancements. They've talked about governance, they've talked about fundraising, et cetera. One of the things, though, that we have identified early on is that unless we actually incorporate things into the design right now, we would, the opportunity for future enhancement could be foreclosed. By way of example, if there's a desired water feature, unless you actually, in the baseline design, have the ability to put, you know, some, some piping for that water, you'll never get it in there, or electric, or other, or sleeving, or other sorts of things. So we know that there are some minimal things that we have to incorporate in our design right now, simply so as not to foreclose future opportunities. It can be incorporated in the design right now, even though it doesn't have to be built out for a while, but we at least have to design it. We also understand that so as not to foreclose the opportunities for the group plan commission, they at least want to have some rendering, some depictions done, so basically, they can go out to potential funding sources and look at those opportunities and show what they would look like. So early on, the problem, of course, is they haven't done their fundraising yet, and we're at the point right now where if we don't act on some of these things, the opportunities are lost. So we went through, and we worked with the, the group plan commission, and we basically set up a budget and said, what would we have to do right now? What activities would we have to undertake right now, at least to preserve, if you will, the opportunity for future, for these future enhancements, so that you don't lose them forever? And so we came up, we worked with our group, our design professionals, including MMPI, LMN, our architect, GGN, the landscape architect, Turner and others. And early on, we guesstimated that the total investment to, to do this entire program would be someplace around $600,000 or less, to do everything that would have to be done right now. And we talked about, a little bit, about a what-if proposal, and by the way, this is not anything that you have approved of. This is something that I am going to be presenting to you and to others. But the what-if proposal was, even though the city had indicated they didn't want to put any additional funds into this, until this group plan commission raises money, we understand that we need, we need to encourage people to put some money into this. So the what-if proposal was, there are three interested parties here. One is the city, and we believed that the, you know, that the city, you know, would appropriately put a third of this up. One is MMPI, because if that mall is enhanced, MMPI does draw benefit, because the better that mall works, the better the Medical Mart and Convention Center works. And for that matter, the county is an interested party here, because the better that works, the better our goals are served. So we basically said, what if, we came up, you know, could we come up with something for approximately $600,000 that could be split three ways, 200, 200, 200, with the understanding that if we did that, you know, that would be our commitment toward this. You know, we've already made a $21 million commitment, as some of you have pointed out before. And, you know, if we did this, it would then be up to others to carry the ball forward. So what we did is, we went through this analysis, and we developed a proposal, which basically involves three phases. Phase one is simply updating the baseline, that's already been done, and there's really no money involved with that. Phase two is to basically take the ideas and the concepts that the group plan commission has said would be of greatest interest to them, and basically, looking at our current design, and both through a conceptual phase and a CD, document revision phase, show the things that have to be done in order to implement their changes. This would be laying out necessary utilities, infrastructure layout and connections, some routing paths, and some other things, and place them in the design drawings, so that they are there, and in fact, they're even bid, so that if a contractor is asked to make these, to do these things, the contractor is in a position to do that. That's phase two. Phase three, then, would be to at least do enough schematic design to show the elements that the group plan commission wants, such as a water feature, a sports court, we'll let Tony talk about that. So there's at least a rendering, so they could go to their fundraisers and see if there is an interest in doing these things. And so the idea is to at least allow that much work to proceed. And by the way, fa, through phase two would be done by our design team, phase three would actually be done by the group plan commission, using GGN as a design professional. We have to control everything through phase two, because we have to modify our own construction documents. We need to use our design team to modify our construction documents. But the idea would be, you then give these, this information to the group plan commission. If they can go, and if they can find the funds, and if they can then say, we're going to pull the trigger on one of these elements, then we can authorize the contractors to go ahead and implement that work. Now, they have to come up with a funding source to do it, but at least we've preserved the ability to do it. If they can't come up with a funding source, well, then, you know, we, we move forward without that alternate to the design. But if you don't implement it now, you lose it. So this is just a schedule that shows when these phases would be implemented, but the bottom line is, we're to the point right now where if we're going to do this, we would really pretty much have to start the process shortly, like in October, to start to do this. From a funding proposal point of view, just to show you how this all lays out, and we spent a lot of time, I will tell you, working on this, to get the numbers into a position where they were guaranteed. Because from my position, if you agreed to this proposal, we don't want anyone ever coming back and saying it's not enough money. So we had to give everyone to guarantee the pricing at every stage of the way. But what this shows you, is it shows you through phase two, the guaranteed not-to-exceed amount is $392,000 to implement all this stuff, and then through phase three, the guaranteed fee is 502,000, it's no more than a total of $502,000 plus some reimbursables. So from the $600,000 ultimate number, the whole program is down to about $502,000. The proposal would be that we do one-third of that, MMPI do one-third, the city do one-third. And at that point in time, and there would be some reimbursable costs in there, but that would be well, well beneath that $600,000 number. So what I wanted to do was present the idea, I'm not asking you for any action right now, but I wanted to present the idea. There were questions about how we preserve these things. This is the proposal as to how we preserve it. I know that the city has already indicated their agreement to this. If we would agree, MMPI would agree to this, if the county agrees. We are prepared to put this into a formal proposal for you in a week, but basically, and now this would be a, a contingency expenditure, would come out of the project contingency, because this is not something right now, you know, that we contemplated at the outset of the project. But it's a way to participate in the activation of the mall, to, to move the process forward, and it would be the, at least, it would be the one contribution, you know, that, that you would be committing to right now, if you wanted to see this process move forward. And that would be the proposal. I can take questions about this, or we certainly can have Tony Coyne come up and talk a little bit more about this, if you want to hear from Tony about this. But that's the nature of the proposal. So do you want to, do you want me to bring Tony up first, or do you want to ask me some questions first?
Either way, as far as...
Well, Tony, why don't you come up, and you can talk about this, and I, I could take questions about this or any other aspect of my presentation, after Mr. Coyne speaks.
Good afternoon, everybody. It's a, a pleasure and honor to be in front of this group, I have to tell you, and to County Executive Fitzgerald. I'll give you a brief background, then you can ask me questions about this, particularly this ad-alternate issue. We completed our final report, the group plan commission did, submitted it in May. I think you all should have gotten a copy, and I know we got a copy to, to County Executive Fitzgerald, and we got a copy to Mayor Jackson. We're grateful that the Greater Cleveland Partnership actually financed all of the copy of the document. They're about, it's a 100-page document. They're about, it's a 100-page document, so it's oversized, and we actually have no more copies left. I have one copy left, but we're going to go back for publication, because we're going to need it for our fundraising efforts. You may recall that incorporating our priority recommendations for the improvements on the mall was time-sensitive, we were all aware of that. In order to capitalize on both construction and financial efficiencies, coordinating the detailed design of these elements and potentially the construction of them during the construction of the convention center, with the bidding and construction process for the Medical Mart and the convention center, it was necessary that we look to a source of funds to do these ad alternate designs, and that's what Jeff, I think, explained in significant detail. In addition to that, we're working currently on a public square traffic study for redesign of public square, and that involves key recommendations from the Planning and Urban Design Working Group, which looks to close Ontario in order to create a new, more vibrant public square, with changing some of the traffic patterns on the square. This working group noticed that the, really, to do that, it's fairly significant to the transportation network downtown. So we have retained a firm called Nelson Nygaard from San Francisco to assist in a traffic analysis for public square, and we've recently received a contribution of $120,000 to complete that traffic analysis. The announcement from the funder of that should be in the next two weeks as well. Nelson Nygaard does a lot of transportation-oriented development, and they're familiar with the Regional Transit Authority, they've done projects of significant scale when downtowns have tried to do things with their transportation system, to make it more pedestrian-friendly, bicycle-friendly, and frankly, to address the quality of space. We're working with RTA on the project, we're looking how to more optimally use our Superior Avenue cross-section, and we're going to meet with other stakeholders on that, because that could be very significant. The study should be concluded by the end of this year, and we hope that these design alternatives on public square will really be significant. The Downtown Cleveland Alliance and Park Works worked on redesigning public square over two years ago. James Corner Field Operations, a New York city-based landscape architect, did the original public square work. We're working off of that. That firm is an award-winning firm out of New York that did the High Line Park in New York. So we're working with a really good design firm, in addition to what I think are really good design firms for the convention center, LMN, and then the surface of the mall, GGN. Our finance working group has been meeting as well, the working group chairs have actually been getting together on a regular basis. The finance working group, which is chaired by Don Mish of Ernst &amp; Young, met two weeks ago. And the findings from our naming rights sponsorship study were completed by the superlative group, and they were presented and shared with us. And while it's important to keep those findings confidential at this time, we don't want to upstage any future sales efforts, and we have to understand exactly how we want to proceed, both with the city, the county, and MMPI, on sponsorship and naming rights. The chiefs of staff of the county was present for that, as was the chief of staff of Mayor Jackson's office. So since our work was completed, we're trying to be sensitive about how to approach naming rights and sponsorship dollars. It's significant, and it's important to the county, the city, and MMPI, how we do that. During the process, it was brought to our attention, just from reading the newspaper, quite frankly, that the state and local budgets have been cut significantly, and both the county and the city are certainly addressing those issues, and I know that's been difficult for everyone. So it's been agreed that the finance working group will complete their financial proposals and plans by the first quarter of 2012, and work with the county and the city to make sure that we sort of reach attainable goals. It was determined at this meeting that we also approached the state of Ohio about the potential ripple effect of this project, and we have essentially a $90 million project list that we have to address through private philanthropic and public sources, and we're currently working on putting together a presentation to solidify how we want to do that and present that. We have some interesting things that are ongoing, I might add. We've got a significant piece of art that, again, is being discussed, that I can't talk about yet, so I'm kind of blinding my tongue, and it's hard to do that, but we have a significant piece of art that is being planned for the site between public square and the lakefront. We've also recently met with the Shaker Lakes Garden Club, the Shaker Lakes Garden Club are celebrating their 100th anniversary in about two years, and they've identified our project as one that they want to participate in, and have agreed to raise a six-figure contribution, both for artwork and potential adoption of an urban room, which we think is kind of neat. And quite frankly, since we haven't formally established the governance structure, that's a nine-to-11 member board, the proposal from our group was to have the county executive and the mayor work on the appointment process for that board, and until we do that, we can't really raise money easily, because we're not established formally as a 501(c)(3). We also are working with a lawyer to form that entity, and again, we're doing it without creating a new nonprofit from the standpoint of having it fully staffed. We intend to work with others and have this as an entity that can help raise money, and help work with others, namely, the Downtown Cleveland Alliance, Park Works, and Cleveland Public Art, who I understand are going to announce formally their collaboration as a united entity in the next couple of days. So that's all proceeding. We've still been getting decent coverage for what we're trying to do. I draw your attention to even Brent Larkin, who wrote an article two Sundays ago in The Plain Dealer, and talking about a vision for public square. He concluded the article by saying, this is a project that Cleveland cannot afford not to do, and I couldn't agree more. So, at this point in time, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have regarding Jeff's comments, and also what we're trying to continue to work to accomplish.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Is my understanding, then, from what you're talking about, Jeff, is that these elements will actually be dictating, to some degree, where the ultimate projects are going to have to take place? If we're pulling cable, pulling wire, we're actually, are taking charge of a major portion of the design, because the infrastructure will be there whenever the design goes on top of it. So if it's a water feature, we're going to roughly be locating where a water feature would be going on top of there.
Correct. It's a collaborative effort. So right now, if you take a look at the preliminary planning, we know by way of example, that if there is a water feature, we know that water feature will be located north of Lakeside. There's an area where we know, so there's been enough work that has been done, where the group plan commission, and LMN, and GGN have all identified locations for these features. There's actually a lot of work which has been done to identify what these alternates are, where they would have to be located, because, yes, we do have to, we have to plan for them. So, you know, it's sort of a, we're going to do, we're going to do the infrastructure work in light of the list, or the planning, in light of the list that we've received, then it's up to Tony's commission to go back and see if they can fund these elements, and if they can, the design is in place for phase one, which is the infrastructure. Now, phase two, there's going to be some schematic design done just to generally show this, but beyond the $600,000, or whatever that is, $502,000, Tony's fundraising then has to get all the money done to complete the design, and then to construct.
Okay, so we're taking a different role than what we were discussing a couple of months ago, in that we were taking hands-off on the design function, but now by doing the infrastructure, we are actually going to, to some element, be at least dictating a piece of that design function.
With the difference, it's not like we're dictating it being the project, there's certain, there's only certain places you can do...
It's not a bad thing, by the way. I think it's...
But it's collaborative.
Keep things moving.
We've basically said, given what we already have built, these are your, you know, this is what you can do. Commission has said, okay, this is what we want to do, if we can raise the money, and we've said, based on that, we can go the next step and show, and figure out what has to be done. So it's sort of collaborative, it's both parties identifying the opportunities.
As it stands...
By design, are we also going to be pulling a whole bunch of empties, also, empty conduits and empty things, so that even though the design is not set, we've got the ability to pull extra power, we got the ability to do all of it?
Great example. There are areas where we probably will install empty conduit, with the idea that if the, you know, that we could pull power through there if we needed to.
Great.
Now, some of this, and by the way, some of this will probably decide that we'd want to do it anyway, but some of it is completely dependent upon what the group plan commission comes up with.
Yeah, it's a lot cheaper to pull the empty conduit with a pull cord than it is to pull it with wire, or all the other kinds of stuff underneath it. But it's also, and we might have stuff that we never use, but it's, at least we'll have the option later on, as long as we document where all those things are.
And, you know, for what it's worth, when we talk about the overall project budget, it's somewhere in the $90 million range. For what I call mall-centric opportunities, it's about $27 million, so it actually, really, in my judgment, is much more doable as somebody that's trying to look at how we're going to raise the money for the project.
Because we're extending our scope in this project, why isn't our $180 million coming out of our 20-plus million that we're already putting in? Why do we have to go back and kick in another $180 million as the county?
$180,000.
Oh, excuse me, $180,000, sorry. $180,000, sorry, $180,000. We've already kicked in the 20-plus million, why isn't our $180,000 coming out of that 20-plus million?
You ask such great questions. On that, I could, no, I only could say, no, I know, no, I know, no, and I can only say that, you know, from that perspective, it's that we're doing things beyond that. So I suppose when, when some of this was, you know, the final negotiations were occurring, I don't think some of these things could be completely anticipated, but from my understanding, you know, the city has passed legislation to go up to $200,000, MMPI, I think, has agreed to contribute their $200,000 up to figure, and it just seemed logical that the county would be part of it. I do think that this whole project, to be successful, is going to require collaboration with everybody, so that was the intent at that time for it to be done in that way, so...
I guess I saw 20 million plus being already part of it, so I guess, in that respect.
You know, I tell people that the baseline, which is the 20 million plus number, is impressive, but, you know, our goal has been to sort of adopt this view of your change in Cleveland entirely, and make this not just a regional project, it's something that's going to be internationally recognized, so...
All right, Ms. Kamwa.
Madam Chair, to Mr. Applebaum or Mr. Coyne. On to my colleague, how soon will this 200,000 from our, from the county need to be done? Or figured out? I know you said soon.
Well, once again, this is done by stages. So, that would be the full 180,000 or so obligation, that would not be used until this entire process is done. But incrementally, I can see some work on there, if this was approved, some of this work will commence in October, which means that the initial billings for it will come in in November. So there'll be some amount of this, where we'll start seeing invoices for our third share, if we do it, basically at the end of November. But that would be, you know, you know, that goes for many months, so that would be, I don't know, you know, a few tens of thousands of dollars, starting in November, probably. I look at the cash flow curve. It's for design, it's for one-third of design fees.
Because I know we're about to start our budget, so we need...
Well, but this, but once again, this money, if we did this, this is already within the project contingency. This would not, this would actually come out of the project fund, which is already accounted for, it's already committed. So this would not represent new dollars for the county, this represents project dollars, which already come out of the project financing, it's already in an account.
Mr. Miller.
Madam President, to Mr. Applebaum, I presume the 500 and some thousand dollars, this is just for the design work needed to get the, the design for the contingency elements into the construction drawings, and also to prepare the materials used for the fundraising effort, is that correct?
That is correct.
Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Applebaum, can you give us any ballpark figure of what the cost would be if we do these additional elements, what the cost would be just for the infrastructure work underneath on the project site?
Well, I can, I know some elements of it, but it kind of depends on, by way of example, if there's a water feature, you know, do you consider the whole, you know, pump house and all that stuff as being part of infrastructure? Because you'd have that, then you'd have, you know, piping, et cetera, so it kind of depends on what you consider infrastructure. But I will say this, our perspective is that the entire infrastructure cost would be up to the group plan commission to find the dollars for. None of that cost is part of our project. None of that, you know, what we're committing to is to assist, basically, to enable this design to go forward in real time, but we're not making any commitment to fund any of that infrastructure cost at all.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Madam Chairman, to Mr. Applebaum, supposing we give the go-ahead and we do this design work, how long does the group plan commission have to raise the money before we get to the point where we're past the point in the project construction where the necessary underground work could no longer be done?
I have a graphic I'd like to show you on that, give me one second. It's another graphic you won't be able to read, but I'll describe it to you. With this graphic, excuse me, what this graphic basically shows is that the group plan commission, after this initial work is done, the phase three work, which is creating the illustrative information that they need for marketing, that work is actually all completed by around December of this year, because it takes a very short amount of time to put that together. The group plan commission then has the ability to go out and basically fundraise and prepare the information, but they have to be completed with that fundraising work by September, the end of September 2012, because by that point in time, we are in phase four, the projects have to be funded, and this work has to continue. So they have to be done with their fundraising by the end of September 2012.
Thank you, Madam President, to Mr. Coyne. Can you describe the charge of the group plan? Is it just to develop a plan for the malls and raise the money to see the plan through implementation? And what happens to the group plan commission after that? Are they there to maintain the facility, or whatever it is that is developed?
Sure, no, it's an excellent question. The governance structure that we intend to have put in place will be a living organization for decades to come. The goal is to have the group plan commission in a position to help not only with the fundraising and the capital improvements, to make it a really dynamic public space for Greater Cleveland, but it's also to program the space for usage, which means that we have a, really, an expectation to be responsible for programming and maintaining the space in perpetuity. We've looked at what other cities have done, some cities have done conservation easements, they've established nonprofits with agreements with the fee owner, which would, in this case, really be the county and the city. The city has the rights to the surface of the mall, but the county technically is the tenant to Vornado, or however it works with the convention center. So, our goal is to be responsible to take over the programming of activities. So that means that we're going to work with schools, we're going to work with the Cleveland Public Library, Felon Thomas is on the commission, so we want to do things to really engage it for children and for activities. The way we're adopting with GGN's work, Mall B, for example, we expect that to be a location where the Cleveland Orchestra will get to play, maybe once or twice, or more times a year than just on public square. And we also think that the active space on the north side of Mall C could be a very interesting space, potentially. We're looking at a location for a food service operation, for restrooms, and we want to be in a position to help raise the money to finance operations of the mall in perpetuity, and to work with the Downtown Cleveland Alliance and Park Works in particular, because that's what they're very good at doing. And I think it would give the city some relief, potentially, and also the county, that someone's going to be focused on just doing that, as opposed to letting it, you know, be kind of dormant. And that space has always been dormant because of the way it was designed.
Thank you.
Mr. Greenspan.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, we talk about this region becoming a first-class, you know, region for economic development and so forth. This has got to be the cornerstone for that activity, I can't emphasize that more. If you look at major cities that have revitalized, whether it's Baltimore, Atlanta, Columbus, and they've made these green spaces, these first-class facilities, so I... so I, I, we need to really get behind and support this. Um, if the county is now being asked to start to participate financially more than we have, have already, half a billion dollars, you know, was what effectively is coming through the county to fund this project, then in essence, we've already funded two-thirds. If we're being asked to come up with, with 200,000, MMPI's money is coming from the county, their, their 200,000. In effect, we've already funded or would, would agree to have funded two-thirds of this project. If we're going to move down that path, do we have a seat at the table on this group plan commission?
Yeah, specifically the, um, the, and I'm, I'm deferring to some degree to the county executive and to the mayor on exactly the, the makeup of the group plan commission. The recommendation in the document that we published basically recommends, um, something in the nine-to-eleven range member board, uh, which would be appointed by the mayor and the county executive. Uh, there would be one seat at the table, um, to our friends at MMPI, just because we thought it was appropriate, or their success or an interest, it would be appropriate since they're programming the medical mart and the convention center. So they should have one person interacting so that there aren't conflicts with activities that occur on the mall. But, um, you know, the old saying about your pay grade, I recognize the importance of Mayor Jackson and County Executive Fitzgerald to come to some consensus on the makeup of that board. And, um, we have some suggested members. I know the governance committee has people that they think would be very interested to be on that board, who are, who are sort of stakeholders, you know, in that part of downtown, and who have an interest in the mall being really dynamic space. And I've advised both, um, Mr. Carroll and Mr. Sillan on behalf of both, both of those elected officials to, you know, to, to make sure they're in a position to address that at the right time. We're not quite there yet, because we want to make sure we have the structure established. And, uh, once, once that happens, I think that, um, you know, I could answer the question better. But I'm sort of deferring, deferring to those two elected officials.
Madam Chair, in the, um, there was, I just don't have the number, how much in the original half a billion was set aside to, for the mall, assuming nothing else, assuming the city didn't do anything? What was, it was, I just don't remember that number.
The, um, yeah, I can, I can answer that. What occurred was this, the, um, the original, uh, I believe the original number, uh, was in the vicinity of 17 million dollars. Uh, that's my recollection. I'm, I'm actually looking, I'm looking back at our Plain Dealer reporter, because she remembers these things. It was 17 million dollars, I believe, in the original budget. What then occurred, um, is, uh, is, uh, I, I admit she has a better memory than I do about some of these things. Uh, and that, and then what occurred, as you may recall, is there came a point in time when we reorganized the project. That's when it was a 425 million dollar budget. We found there were a lot of inadequacies and problems with respect to the budget. That's when we had to reorganize the whole north side, redo the, the mall. And we used about, and we did a deal with MMPI where we used 30, about 31 million dollars of our contingency, eight and a half million dollar commitment from MMPI, which took the budget up to 465, which gave us our final workable project. When that occurred, that also had additional dollars in the, uh, in the, in the mall budget, if you will, to do everything we had to do, and that's what took it from around 17 to around 21. That's, that's my recollection.
I think that's right. That sounds, that sounds consistent.
Do, Madam Chair, do we know ballpark, and obviously it's going to change depending on the build-out of, and how many, we have water features, we have an amphitheater, we have restaurants, what have you. What type of range are we looking at as far as, what do you think a comfortable range to build out this?
For the, the mall, I should be careful about this, but I think I, um, I don't think I have it with me, but I, I believe it's around 27 million dollars for the, for the mall. And that would include, um, you know, the, the, um, the urban rooms being done. I think there are 14 urban rooms, a significant water feature in Mall C in front of the entrance way to the convention center, which would be, you know, dramatic exit of the convention center, potential splash park, there's a children's playground area, uh, there are some sports courts that still have to be delineated, um, and then Summit, I think Summit Bluff or Walk, which is a pedestrian connection between Ninth Street and West Third. I think that comes to about 27 million dollars. The two bigger ticket items that aren't really part of, of the, this ad alternate issue really, uh, would be the, the bridge connection to the lakefront and then the Public Square. Public Square is probably the single largest nut in the 40 to 50 million dollar range.
The, Madam Chair, so the 21 million just gets it to a baseline, and 27 would be on top of that?
Correct, that's correct.
And the, how much potential exposure might the county be asked, fiscal exposure, financial exposure, be asked to contribute towards this 27 million?
Well, uh, let me take a stab, and I'll let Jeff correct me. Um, the, um, you know, the 27 million, uh, we intend to do as much as we possibly can uh, through private sector and philanthropic fundraising, both through sponsorship dollars and, and, and naming rights opportunities. Um, the, the single largest naming rights opportunity would be the convention center name. Uh, I believe the city has agreed that they would put that back into the group plan work, that, that dollar figure. It's to be split between the county and the city. Um, I, I believe the county would simply probably have to put it back into the project, but you wouldn't have to put it into the group plan commission if the county chose not to do that, into the group plans, you know, improvements. So I, I think we're, you know, we're hopeful that we'll ask, but like I've told others, I'm, I'm, I'm starting to wait. I, I really want to do this methodically. I've seen too many plans in Cleveland fail. That's why we've established this in a very logical, structured manner with a, with a governance entity, a finance entity, a planning and urban design element, and then a, a communications team that, that's being headed up by Felton Thomas's group. We're waiting to start to be more interactive. We do have the website, we do get a lot of feedback. Um, but beyond that, I think it would be up to the county. So I don't know that we have any expectation that the county's going to bail out anything that the group plan commission's doing.
Yeah, Madam President, my, my just final comment, not a quick, just, if, if we're, my point is, if we're going to be asked to financially participate, I would, I would like to see that our representation on this group plan commission be proportional to the amount of money that we're, that we participate. I, I'd like to see us be able to be in the decision-making role, uh, and controlling those taxpayer dollars, or at least having, control is the wrong word, at least having an input as to how they're, how they're spent.
Understood.
Or I should say invested, in this case.
And I thought your question was slightly different, uh, but here, here is another aspect that we have to think about, which is to say, some of these improvements must be made, if they're going to be made at all, they've got to be made so that the improvements are in place, uh, when the project opens. And those improvements really have to be made by the same design and construction team that's doing the project, because you can't have some other contractor working, you know, it's integrated work. Some of the improvements theoretically could be made after the project opens. You could always add a sports court. So I thought where your question was coming from is, do we take additional risk if we take on the project? So it's our, you know, it's the design build team, does MMPI take on risk, do we take on risk? And, and the answer to that would be, you know, the, my presumption, by the way, unless someone tells me otherwise, is, is that, you know, we're not funding any of that work. Now, that could be a, a decision someone else makes, but I'm presuming we, we fund none of that work. However, the dollars do flow into our design build team to do the work from another source. But that means that we still have to get the guarantee of, you know, uh, from our design build team. There's got to be a contingency in there, it's got to be insured. So we, the cost of doing this work does have to have the necessary contingencies and protections, because ultimately, those fall under contracts, which are under MMPI, which are under the county. So we have to build in those protections.
All right, Mr. Schrein.
Yes, uh, just to Mr. Greenspan's point, if we're 27 million roughly for the vision of that, and we already have 21 million, I, I guess I kind of think that we're already in, uh, we're already in the game for almost 20-plus percent, or, I mean, 40-plus percent of, of what that 48 million dollars is coming out, at least from my math, it, it sure sounds like if the, if the project is 21 million plus 27.
You know, you, you've certainly said that before, but at the same time, I'm saying, if, if, let's say this project didn't happen, I think it's important that we do something with our mall. So in some respects, the way I thought that budget was established is that you're going to restore the mall to sort of the way you found it, because it's a historic location and district. So I think, I hear what you're saying, but I, I mean, we're trying to go beyond that, and we're trying to be...
Yeah, I'm, I'm just taking, if the mall project is a 48 million dollar project, of which 21 million is ours already, it's just hard for me not to believe that we, that we don't have a lot of skin already in the game. And it, it ought to entitle us to be sitting at the table and helping to participate in where that, that design, because it's going to affect the building, to which we are the ones ultimately. If that water feature doesn't incorporate into the design, and somebody else is doing something that is not aesthetically or functionally working with our building, we, we got a real problem, I mean, ultimately.
I truly hope the county's at the table through the process with...
Commensurate with our proportionality, it seems to me.
Understood.
And, uh, it, it, to Mr. Miller's question, I thought that you indicated, Mr. Applebaum, that there, there were not infrastructure components like the water feature plumbing, but there was going to be the structural components to make sure that we could locate the, the plumbing, and which, which...
There, there are some sleeving components. We're talking here, I mean, that's extremely minor. We're talking, uh, in the, uh, we're not talking 100, we're talking like 30, 40, 50,000 dollars worth of incidental work.
But those sleeving components are what are going to give us the, the ability to be flexible down the road. Without those sleeving components...
You got to dig it up?
You got to dig, it's monumental cost to take on concrete and stuff like that.
The point being is, if you implement that work in your base building work, it's, it's, it's incidental. Uh, it doesn't cost you anything, or it costs you very, very little. Uh, and some of that was already planned, this is just a question of where it goes and, and how you, how you lay it out.
But those sleeving components are also going to be dictating some of the features that can get sleeved within that component, whether it's, whether it's the water...
It's sizing issues and placement issues.
Right, whether we're pulling three- or four-inch concrete...
By, by way of example, we were always committed to have electrical, uh, on the mall. Uh, we, we have a commitment within our 21 million dollars as to where people can feed, uh, but knowing what the possible plan is, you know, informs you as to how you do that, uh, you know, placement issues. But, but this is not, this is not where the big dollar expense is. There are some dollars, very minor, associated with that.
I just want Mr. Miller to understand that we, we are going to get some structural components out of it that'll give us the flexibility. And then lastly, unrelated to that, but are we going to get those same sleeving and structural components, uh, of where our building currently is going to tie into this still? As far as the county, the county current office building slash hopefully future hotel? Uh, those, we talked about, uh, sleeving components going to be tying potentially to that, that space. Is, is that still part of our design?
Well, we, our, our design doesn't preclude it. So, you know, we, we, our design anticipates the possibility and doesn't preclude it. So there's nothing we're doing that precludes that possibility. We're not actively spending money yet, but we're not precluding that, that possibility. Thank you.
Um, the Plain Dealer reported earlier last week, I think it was, about, um, the giving of space to Tri-C and, and Cleveland State, and can we get an explanation about that?
Uh, yes. Um, yes, and we'll, there, let me mention to you that...
Am I done yet?
Unless, unless you want to negotiate how much you're not going to get from Mr. Schrein...
Jeff, you're doing a fine job.
I recommend that you leave.
Madam President, before, before we leave the topic of the group plan, because I, I wanted to ask the same que, I thought there should be some public exposition of what you just mentioned, but I just did want to clarify one thing about the group plan. I, I do appreciate Tony's advocacy for that. The, I'm in agreement that some money should be sent so as not to foreclose, uh, some potential that's, that's there. There are parts of the group plan that I like. The county did not really participate in, in the writing of the group plan, for whatever reason. And, and that was under the old administration, but we, we haven't really had a lot of participation in it. I mean, there'd been some presentations, I, I like some of the things that I've seen, but I just, I wanted the council to know, I, I've never said, well, you know, I think the county, my public position has been that I'm interested in it, but we may, I think there's a lot of deliberation that has to be done between myself and the council and the city of Cleveland. I've talked about this subject several times with Mayor Jackson, and he understands that that's what, what my position is anyway, that I think there's a lot that needs to be discussed about that, and how much, if any, significant additional financial contribution we would make. I also think that there's, and I've said this a couple times publicly, but I, I think I should say it here, since this discussion is going on, it, the plan may be too big, it may be too small. I mean, there, there are things that, if there's going to be a significant additional investment in the downtown Cleveland area, there are some goals that I'd like to see that aren't in there. And that's part of the problem with not having been at the table. First of all, I understand we hadn't been elected yet, so it would have been premature, but, um, you could have had the foresight to see what was going to happen, but, but that's okay. But, but, but I, I'm just saying that, to me, that is, that is very much an, an open question. And I don't want counsel to even get the, the feeling that, that, um, uh, as, as good as Mr. Coy's advocacy is, and I appreciate his public spiritness and this whole thing, we, we haven't reached any kind of agreement on it, other than, than I'm, I'm interested in it and we want to, we want to work on it. I just wanted the council to know that's what my position has been on it.
All right, Ms. Simon, you have a question?
Thank you, Madam President. And just before we leave the top of, topic of group plan commission as well, I, I just want to say that if we are to consider any additional dollars into the plan, that I, I would like to see some conditions, um, placed, if, to whatever extent we can, that this is going to be a project, a teaching project, not only entertainment, but a sustainable teaching ground, because this is, this is where we're going, um, is the future of innovation. If we're going to have a water feature, shouldn't that be, we use alternative means of electricity, the wind turbine that's there, connect the dots, let's have this as a teaching place, not just a place to come and have fun, because this can be a project of the future. So, uh, to whatever extent this council can have input into this and/or the executive, I'd like to see this more than just a place to watch movies. If we are going to watch movies with a big screen, let's show how that can be done with alternative, um, means to run that.
No, I, I think, you know, it just, if I could, uh, when, when we started this, you know, we didn't have the same county government in place, um, we actually didn't have the project in place, the building next door was part of the project. I mean, I could go on, it really got complicated, and I don't know what I was getting myself into. My wife was ready to kill me when some of this stuff started to unwind. But, having said that, our goal is to, to do exactly those kinds of things as well. Not only sustainability, from a sustainability standpoint, when you think about children and kids, I mean that sincerely in the sense that not only were we in the process of how do we program, that kind of thing. They did that in Chicago with Millennium Park to celebrate city planning, architecture, urban design, sustainability, green building, all of that. We, we, our superintendent also left in the midst of that. So I, I mean, I've been in a position where I'm trying to still advocate, but there's certain, certain things that we're missing. So that's why we've got to get this, this group formed and, and to, to the county executive, I mean, it's going to have representation from, uh, the county and the city, being really the two entities to, to sponsor who's on it. So hopefully, as we go forward, it's going to be much more collaborative. And hopefully, I'm, I'm really, you know, optimistic that you're going to see some private sector dollars significantly at the table when we do this thing, because we can't keep looking to, to, to the government on this. And I also think that if it can, uh, be raised to the "your change in Cleveland" concept of connecting downtown and making it really a, a broader project to sort of transform our city and our community and our region, then I'd like to try to advocate for that, but I have to sort of stay within my bounds, because there are other people that have to make decisions before I get out ahead of the curve. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Brady?
At, at some point, and I don't think that's today, uh, maybe at the next session, um, I, I'd like to hear more about the tie-in between Public Square and, and a discussion about, you know, how, what your, you know, what your vision is for Public Square, how it ties into the, to the mall, and, and, obviously, it's a, it's a, it's a almost sacred ground in a lot of ways, and so there's, you know...
Yeah, the, the traffic engineering firm we're working with, um, is trying to identify exactly how we can address the Ontario, uh, street being eliminated, and then also connecting those two quadrants of the square. We also have, um, an interest for a speakers box down by the Tunnel Johnson statue through the City Club. I think at least mentioned that that's something we're looking at. But there's a diagonal connection that has never been there that really is important, and that diagonal connection is from the entrance to Terminal Tower to the mall. Um, it's currently, the grade change is significant, where you can't see through it. So it makes it, it's perceptually a, a sort of a unsafe way to go, particularly at night. But with the casino opening up and the Terminal Tower still being sort of an iconic building in Cleveland, we're trying to identify, to make a pedestrian connection all the way to Mall A. And, and that's something that we're going to be working on the beginning of November with, with another consulting firm. So, um, we're, we're very, you know, serious about how to address that, and we're being sensitive to the, the needs of the folks that really need Public Square as a transportation hub, too. We're trying to figure that out.
Thank you.
The one thing I, I do want to add, and this goes to, uh, the county executive's, one of his points, we are simply doing this to preserve an opportunity. Uh, we are not, we believe that the baseline solution is a fully effective solution. If we did nothing, uh, we would be proud of the baseline solution, we would be proud of what we are doing, uh, with respect to the mall, and we think it would be, you know, wonderful, you know, a wonderful improvement over what we have and work well with the mall. you know, a wonderful improvement over what we have and work well with the mall. We want to preserve the opportunity to look at these other issues. We're not commenting right now about, you know, the desirability of any particular solution that may be proposed. We're simply preserving the opportunity to have them. But I don't want to diminish what we already have. We think what we have is good and perfectly adequate if we did nothing else. We just don't want to foreclose the opportunity to look at these other options. So I want to make that point. We don't think this has to happen. We want to preserve the opportunity to let it happen and to look at those options. To go to the question about, I'll make an introductory comment and then have Brian talk a little more. Let me first of all say, our proposal is, at the, at the next meeting, we intend to take some real time to lay out the business plan. We don't want to get too far ahead of it right now for a couple of reasons. One reason is that MMPI is in the, in the midst of their contract negotiations, and I'm just going to tell you that, a little bit about where they are, because I don't want to expose Brian to too much of this, because he is in the middle of negotiations. The bottom line is, is they have identified their first group of leases, he may reveal the number, but they now are out with, they've gone from letters of intent to contracts, to leases, that are out to a significant number of players, they are in negotiations, they have comments back. So they're in that process right now. I've asked, however, that MMPI, by our next council meeting, we intend to have some other conversations, by our next council meeting, we want them to make a very full disclosure of where they stand on their overall business plan and their strategy. A little of it is uncomfortable, though, when you're in negotiations. There is clearly a local component to it. Brian, you know, hopefully, I'd like you to talk just briefly about the local component about this and why we have these folks there. I do want to say one thing about incentives. Part of the original deal does contemplate that, and keep in mind, that to the extent any show or private party is, gets incentives to come into either the mall, or either the Medical Mart, I should say, or into the convention center. Any rent that, any, any non-payment of rent is the risk that MMPI takes. They aren't, they get the rent. So if they give a concession, they are the ones who are giving the concession as part of their business plan, okay? Our goal is to have a critical mass of people downtown in shows, doing what, you know, being in restaurants, being in hotels. So we want the critical mass of people downtown. We actually want to encourage them to properly incentivize certain groups to be down there. We want them to do whatever it takes, because they're the ones who, you know, provide the incentives. They're the ones who the rent doesn't go to if they give rent relief in certain cases. Now, they have to use it appropriately and properly, but we actually, in the agreement, have the commitment from them that they will do that. Keep in mind that positively Cleveland, to bring major shows downtown, would frequently give incentives, where they would incentivize people, whether it's breaks on rates, et cetera, to bring these shows downtown. We wanted to be sure that MMPI does offer the incentives to fill this place up. So it's not a bad thing that they give incentives. Now, who they give the incentives to, what the plan is, is something that they should present, but I just wanted to make that introductory statement, and then maybe you could just say a few words, but once again, we're going to ask you to come back at the next meeting and do a full disclosure of this plan.
Yeah, yes. And thank you, Jeff, because I think you just made my presentation a little bit easier. Council members, Madam Chair, Executive, County Executive Fitzgerald. Calculated incentives in the commercial real estate business is not unusual, and it's practically commonplace in the mart business. So what we are doing will, as Jeff pointed out, be providing more of an update to you as how that correlates to an overarching business plan that really positions us as, I think, a global marketplace in the medical and healthcare industry convention business. When I last presented to you, we had released, I think, about 17 contracts to LOI holders. And I explained to you that we have a phased process in that, in that effort to go out to the market. We have gone into our phase two process, which is, we've got about another 19 contracts that are out. So that represents about 36 LOI holders that have contracts in hand, and if we're able to convert them all to full-blown leases, that's about 80% of the Medical Mart potential space that we have to lease right now. So I feel very good. The attorneys are working very actively in our first round of that. We've already received numerous responses from legal teams from the LOI holders, and they're now going through that, and it's part of the negotiation process, commonplace. And we hope to wrap some of those up, and by the time we come back to you, we expect to have a list of LOI holders that have been converted to full-blown leases, as well as an overarching business plan that explains really the strategy of what we're going to do in, in going to market and putting Cleveland back on the map as a center, and very competitive position in the convention industry.
Mr. Gallagher, I think I have a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do we have an anchor yet?
Well, I would say we have a few anchors, but we don't have the signed, you know, leases at this, this point in time, but.
I guess that comes down to interpretation, is, you know, and you don't have, you know, you can wink if it's Siemens or Agfa or Microsoft.
Well, you know, I'll tell you, Staris is a, is a, is a very big company, and we are very close to getting, you know, our lease completed with them, so. And, you know, it doesn't stop there. I mean, when I say 80% of these, I mean, this is, this is something that's going to be an ongoing basis. We're not, we're not stopping with the LOI holders that we have been talking to. We're continually reaching out into the community. I think the last time you and I spoke, we talked about Hims, I've been in touch with them and have had conversations with them. It's still an early prospective stage of conversation with them, but, you know, as I mentioned, you know, we are going to continually look at, you know, how we can, can make this mart stronger with the tenant base that we're bringing in. But it's not a million square feet, so it has to be very niche-oriented, it has to fit within the overarching strategy. And I think that when you see the mix of tenants that we're presenting to you, and you see the overarching business strategy that we're presenting, you'll see that it kind of fits nicely together.
I think that's where the question came with Tri-C and Cleveland State, with, with the space that you do have. And it's, as you told me, this isn't my business, you guys know what you're doing, and I'm putting a lot of faith in that. We do have an interesting partnership with Metro Hospital. Have they been offered anything?
Yes.
Because I saw them this morning, and maybe not the right people, but, I mean, for free, or are they paying?
I am not at liberty to talk about the negotiations that are underway with.
I would suggest you think about it, freebie over there, considering. Thanks.
Mr. Germana?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Actually, Medical Mart came up yesterday. I happened to be golfing with someone that was legal counsel for a company out of Nashville that provides hospitalist physicians to hospitals for in, in hospital care. Can you comment about what's happening in Nashville? Is this, is this real competition, or where that stands?
You know, what I can say is that we are in such a strong position right now with the way the construction has, has been progressing, the activity that we've had with LOI holders. You know, I've, in my 30 years of convention business, people sometimes get nervous about competition. And what, what I find is that if you pay attention to your own knitting, you end up being far more successful. You have to pay attention and keep an eye on any activity, but I think that you cannot take your eye off of what you're doing. So, you know, I have not heard any reports coming out of Nashville, but, you know, either way, it's not of a concern to me, because I feel as though the process that we're undertaking, the, the success factors that we are, metrics that we're looking at right now, I think are falling right in line. And I think we're going to see very quickly that this thing is going to rapidly begin to kind of pick up speed, and we're going to, I think, again, you know, the, the goal here is to put Cleveland back on the map amongst convention planners, because they don't, they haven't looked at us in a long, long time, because we just have lacked the infrastructure. And this is going to be a game changer for many of them for a number of reasons, and what we're doing from the build-out, from the design of the IT infrastructure, from partnerships that we're aligning with right now. And so I think when I come back and talk to you, much of this will really make some very good sense to you.
As a second part of that, this company may be a potential tenant, if it makes sense, because they, on a national basis, are providing physicians to hospitals for, for inpatient care while physicians from outside the hospital, they are not on call in the evenings, so on and so forth. So I suggested them that it may be something, and I'll get the people's name.
I mean, if you can get their name to us, I mean, if we're not talking to them, we will talk to them. Yes.
Are there any other questions, or can Mr. Rogers?
I just had one regarding the group plan, again. We have a, Mr. Applebaum had indicated that we're looking to have a deadline of September 2012 to meet the fundraising goals, and, or about, around there. And we're looking for completion of the, the total Medical Mart project in August of 2013. So will there be concurrent construction going on with the group plan, and do you anticipate being complete, at least with the mall sections?
We, you know, that's, that's a, that's a question that's a little bit difficult to predict, because our, one of the things we're trying to do is, is with this whole ad alternate issue, is that we can actually do this in pieces parts. This may be something to be phased in. There are a couple of, I think, big convention events, there's a big sporting event, I think, in Cleveland, the senior games or something, and we don't want to do anything that's going to delay anything. So it may be that some of the improvements to the mall, whether it's adding an urban room or finishing a, you know, a playground, that may happen in a phased manner, because, I mean, we're respectful of the fact that times are difficult right now. So really, we're trying to do this thing so that it gets done, but I don't want to give myself a deadline that it's going to be done when the constructions of the convention center and the Medical Mart are done. It may be that we're going to be installing elements of this for a year, or two, or three years after that. That could very well happen.
I don't want to mislead you. On that schedule, for anything that has to be implemented by opening, by the opening of the project, fundraising has to be done. In fact, there are some things where fundraising even has to be done before September. That's the last date that it has to be done for everything to be implemented in the project. There are things that you can do later. I mean, frankly, a sports court you could put in any time, it's a surface improvement. Now, but there are some, some elements on that, on that list that actually have priority in terms of time. And so some of those fundraising, and there'll be a much more detailed schedule that the group plan commission will have, that's, now, that's a bar chart. That's the earliest start date and the last finish date, but there's actually milestone dates within that where some fundraising even has to be done earlier if some of those projects are going to be achieved.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Do we have any miscellaneous business for the work session? Do we have, did anyone sign in for public comment?
No, Madam Chair.
All right. There being no further business for this work session, we will stand adjourned until 6 o'clock for our regular council meeting.